September Common Council Meeting to Order. All alderpersons are present. Thank you all for being here. Welcome to those joining us at home or in the viewing audience here this evening. Item number three on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a silent prayer in lieu of invocation. I invite you to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four on our agenda this evening is a reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, previous regular meeting, attachment number one. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Dolan. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? See no requests to speak? Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item five is a reading of the minutes of a previous special meeting, attachment number two. Council members, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to dispense with the reading and approve the minutes.
Have a motion by Zurflu, second by Furkey. Any requests to speak for additions or corrections? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Item number six on our agenda this evening is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body may do so on items appearing before our agenda this evening, in which you'll be invited to speak for no more than five minutes. On items such as a public hearing, I will call for individuals speaking for and against, in which individuals on that item may come forward and speak on that item. There is, I believe, just one public hearing on the agenda this evening. Item number seven is my report. Good evening, council members, city staff, and those here or watching from home. With the start of another school year, last year seniors are in their first semester at college, and the mayor's youth council is recruiting new members. We are accepting applications for students from ninth through 12th grades from Lincoln and Assumption, and now this year, from areas surrounding high schools as well. The application deadline is September 29th. If you know of anyone that may be interested in being a part of the mayor's youth council, applications can be found on the city website, our Facebook page, or from my office. Completed applications can be brought to City Hall upon completion. Looking ahead, the mayor's youth council is looking forward to providing guidance and participating in the Zoo Master Plan Project and continuing to assist with the Aquatics Center fundraising project. On aquatics, we kicked off Labor Day weekend by holding the dedication celebration and opening of the splash pad at Mead Field. These last few weeks of summer-like weather and temperatures have brought about a great opportunity for families to enjoy it, something we didn't quite expect but hope might be the case, following a cool summer. In late August, a few city staff and I toured, as well as alderperson Furkey, toured two aquatic center facilities similar to what we've designed here in Wisconsin Rapids. Following last week's discussion with council members and the community, we are working to identify individuals from the community who are passionate about the project, maybe versed in fundraising or communications, or simply are willing to support and fundraise for the Aquatics Center. If you or someone you know is passionate about bringing the aquatics project to a reality and is willing to donate and contribute their time to the project, please contact an alderperson, myself, or my office. We plan, we remain on schedule from when we originally communicated it last April to, with the project fundraising to happen this fall and winter, with a planned groundbreaking for spring of 2018. Our fundraising target remains $7 million for the entire park and master plan for the project, and $5 million for the aquatic center portion of that $7 million. So with that, there's an estimated cost that still remains of $12 million for the entire project. Since August, council meeting, the YMCA Boys and Girls Club announced their intention to cite the joint project at the site currently occupied by the Rapids Mall. This exciting collaborative will undoubtedly change the look of the mall area while also bringing about renewed traffic and interest in our downtown revitalization efforts. As one personally that got involved in downtown revitalization efforts back in 2002 and opened a business in that area in 2003, I couldn't imagine the announcement that has happened at that point. I know this brings about change and some consternation, particularly from those who occupy space in the mall, who some of we've met with to discuss assistance and support for their relocation. The city remains willing to discuss that relocation or any other aspects of concern with anybody, so contact my office or reach out, and we'll be happy to have a discussion with you. On the airport, as was reported in the media last week, the airport funding remained in the Assembly and Senate versions of the state budget. The $4 million support will support an apron expansion to accommodate more aircraft parking, aircraft storage hangars, and taxiways. We're very optimistic that the governor will sign the budget retaining the financial support. I believe the governor has until tomorrow to do so, barring or pending any potential line item vetoes, which certainly could be a possibility. The Planning Commission, as you know and have seen through Planning Commission reports on our council agendas, the extensive zoning code rewrite project continues. Last night, we spoke about parking driveways, development, traffic impact analysis studies that may be required as a part of developments, and downtown design standards. So I encourage you to continue to read those reports. We'll be having more throughout the fall and winter in terms of adoption of that code, but we make meaningful progress every month in our meetings, and appreciate the discussion and commitment by all the Planning Commission members on that item. This Wednesday or tomorrow, I'll be participating in the celebration and ribbon cutting for the largest solar project here in central Wisconsin, right in our own city, on the rooftop of McMillan Library. Refreshments will be served in the upper lobby at the library, starting at 3:00 with a brief program to follow at 3:30. And then, if folks are individual, interested in individual tours, those will be provided following the program of the solar array that's on the roof of the library. The Memorial Clock and Bell Tower will be rededicated in honor of Paul Gross next Thursday, September 28th, at a reception from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The remarks are expected at about 5:30 p.m. This 125-year-old clock mechanism and bell tower has been fully restored, thanks to the generosity and acceptance by the city of the Mead Witter Foundation, and we look forward to that event and hopefully good weather next Thursday evening. Urkel Worldwide and Port Edward celebrated their 50th anniversary last week. Given the number of people they employ and the connection to Wisconsin Rapids, I attended their celebration, which brought executives, customers, and former leadership who have moved up in the company back to the community. They're also the largest contributor to United Way in our community, funding many of the community needs here in the city. Two weeks ago, another successful grand affair was held, with obviously great weather and a late Packer game brought about strong attendance and the largest showing of the car show yet. Suffice to say, the mayor's choice, given the amount of new vehicles every year, has not gotten any easier. In full disclosure, I almost picked the same vehicle as I did last year of the winner, so my preferences don't change, I guess, year to year. In conclusion, proclamations, Constitution Week, 17th through the 23rd, which is this week of September, which that proclamation is on display at the library. That concludes my report. We'll move into the rest of our agenda. Item number eight, under New Business. Item A is appoint a member to the Water Works and Lighting Commission to serve a five-year term, beginning on October 1st, 2017. It's my understanding that two individuals did register their interest, incumbent Mike Phillips and Jim Nitzel, both of which are in attendance tonight. If council members wish to pose some questions or invite them to the podium, now would be the appropriate time to do so. Council members, what are your wishes regarding alderperson? Kellogg, you're first.
Representing the Common Council, I've attended for four years the Water and Light Commission meetings, and closed and open sessions, and I didn't know Mike Phillips prior to then, but during my time visiting over those four years, I've earned a lot of respect for Mike. He is quite knowledgeable of the area of water and light interest, and one thing I like about Mike is that he's outspoken. He raises those pertinent questions that people need to be raised, and he questions many of the operations of water and light to make sure it's done correctly. So I really, if Mike wants to speak, fine, but I'm really confident of appointing him to continue on that commission, so I just want to speak on his behalf. So I don't know, Mike, if you want to make a comment, it's up to you.
Mike, if you wish to make comment, yeah, you'll have to come up to the podium there and make sure that the microphone button is on, so that way we can pick you up on the recording and the TV. Hopefully, hopefully it's plugged in for you. That should be on, yes, if you just speak into the microphone, then.
Thank you. Five years ago, at the first point of the water and light, I was told it would take five years to learn a little bit more. What I would like to do now is take my background in the electrical and combine this to five years to try to expand the water and light. Couldn't hear me?
Thanks, Travis.
And combine it all and make it better. That's it.
Alderperson, while Mike's at the podium, is there any other questions for him?
Thanks, Mike.
All right. Thanks, Mike. I'm not seeing anybody else wishing to pose any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Council members, alderperson Cothe, you're next.
If Jim Nitzel's here and he also applied, I think maybe we should offer him a chance to speak as well.
Jim, if you'd like to come forward.
You know, I just retired, not even a year ago, and for me to be standing here is kind of weird, but here I am. I found out about, you know, the opening, and I thought I would be a good fit. I've had a lot of experience in the water side of things. I was a construction supervisor for, I think, 15 or 17 years, installed a lot of water main. You know, I understand the system, I understand the function of it. As a superintendent of the wastewater plant, I got into the electrical side of things because we generated our own electricity, and I just thought I do have something to contribute yet to the city. And if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Jim? For anybody?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you both for your interest. Council members, floor is open for requests, nomination. Open the floor for nominations.
I nominate Jim Nitzel.
The nomination for Jim Nitzel.
I nominate Mike Phillips.
You have a nomination for Mike Phillips. We will now close nominations, since those are the two individuals. We typically will do a paper ballot. Is that the best, Sue, on this one here? Probably do it.
I think we usually do, but it does seem to be the public.
All right. So however, council members, how would you like to accomplish this? Normally, we'd have a paper vote.
We could just, an "aye" vote could be for the first nominee, and the "nay" vote could be for the second, perhaps?
The preference, sure, we can.
Okay, okay, so the "aye" vote is, the first nominee was brought forth by Cothe, and that's Nitzel, so "aye" will be Nitzel, and then the second nomination was Kellogg for Phillips, so "nay" will be Phillips. "Aye" for Nitzel, "nay" for Phillips. Go ahead and cast your ballot.
It's a new way of doing it. So I get to, but I don't have to. I will choose to decline to break the tie on this opportunity, which, choosing not to break the tie in the situation. So there's been a request for paper ballot.
Do you want to vote again? Okay. What do we got, eight people? One, two, three, four. What's your district number, please?
Give the results of the vote first, and then we'll... Okay, the results of the paper ballot was a tie.
In which case, I will opt to decline to break the tie in that situation again, as I did previously. The item, the appointment will be unsettled, and will be, our practice generally is for the incumbent to serve until a replacement has been appointed. So, Mike, you would continue to serve until the item is settled. I would expect this item to appear on the next month's council agenda. Thank you both for your interest. If you have any further questions, we'll certainly address them through the clerk's Item 8B is a first reading of the ordinance amending Section 2.04, parent 1, parent A of the municipal code, allowing for a change in the date of the regular council meetings if necessary. See the ordinance, attachment number three. And allow Attorney Schilt to just indicate, since there's two charter ordinances on the agenda, to speak sort of to the...
Right. Actually, the first one is not a charter ordinance.
Oh, sorry.
It's a, it's the meeting one, right?
Right.
Right. Yeah, this was a referral from alderperson Zurflu regarding, giving some flexibility regarding the dates and times of the regular meeting. The ordinance did provide that the meetings shall be held on the third Tuesday of each month at 6:00 p.m. However, practice has been, at least in the time that I've been here and I believe preceding me, that on rare occasions, those meetings had been changed because of maybe a holiday or a lack of a quorum, or for other legitimate reasons. However, alderperson Kubitschak brought it to our attention that really, and rightfully so, that if it says in the ordinance, we have to meet at a certain time, then we really should be meeting at that time. The ordinance did not really allow for a lot of flexibility, so alderperson Zurflu had requested to, which is very common in other cities' ordinances, to have some flexibility in terms of when the regular council meeting would be. So I have added language, basically saying it's ordinarily going to be on the third Tuesday of each month. However, the council president could schedule a regular meeting at another time if quorum can't be obtained, or if the interests of the city require it. And regarding the legal holiday, the ordinance did say that we would always meet on the next day, which, in practice, we never, we never did. We usually would do it the week before, perhaps the week after. So I had that changed to say that we shall meet as close as practical to that time, as scheduled and called by the council president. And the final change that's proposed to be made is regarding the calling of a special meeting. The state statute was recently changed to allow the mayor to call a special meeting and notify members in a manner likely to give each member notice of the meeting, and we usually do that via email, instead of a written notice to each member delivered personally, which is what the state law had provided previously. So I changed, I'm suggesting that change to allow that flexibility consistent with the new state law. This is a first reading of this ordinance. If it is not unanimous tonight, then it would come back for a second reading in October.
All right. The referral went to alderperson Zurflu, so I'll defer to him to speak first about the item.
Yeah, basically, the idea was just alderperson Kubitschak, and rightfully so, addressed a concern that people expected to be on the third Tuesday, so maybe they show up and there's no one here, or maybe they can't make an alternative day. Addressing quorum issues specifically, I would hate to have a meeting and then have four people show up, and then, you know, the people that want to come and speak on an issue have to come back anyway at a later time. So that was really the idea behind changing the ordinance.
All right. The floor is open for requests to speak, or obviously a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment.
Motion by Zurflu, a second by Cothe. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
The result of the motion is seven ayes and one nay. The ordinance will come back for a second reading in, at the October Common Council meeting.
Item 8C, under New Business, the first reading of a charter ordinance amending Section 2.01 of the municipal code, changing the term of mayor from two years to four years, commencing with the spring 2018 election. See the ordinance, attachment number four. Allow Attorney Schilt to speak first, and then I'll go to the council member that made the referral.
All right. This is a charter ordinance, which, for passage, would require a two-thirds, two readings and a two-thirds vote, six council members in favor. However, if it does pass tonight unanimously, then it would only require the one reading. Basically, the only change is the previous ordinance said that the mayor's term was a two-year term, and the clerk, attorney, and judge are four-year terms, and that sentence was simply changed to, those sentences were changed to one sentence, to say the mayor, clerk, attorney, and municipal judge are elected for four-year terms. There was no other change to that ordinance. Since it's a charter ordinance, if it does pass either unanimously tonight or with a two-thirds vote next month, if not unanimous tonight, it would take effect 60 days after passage, unless within 60 days, a referendum petition is filed, in which event, the ordinance would not take place until referendum was held and approved by a majority of the electors.
Thank you. Alderperson Dolan?
Yeah, I made this referral at the last council meeting, and in all honesty, at the time, I said it was because I've been getting a lot of calls from constituents that, why, isn't it a four-year term? So that's why I made the referral. I'm not standing here saying I'm for or against it, that's just why I made the referral.
Alderperson Kellogg?
I brought this concern up at the H.R. Committee. I'm concerned of a two-year term, because once you get a mayor in office, just to get traction, I mean, two years and all of a sudden, you have to run again. You really can't do very much, and so I was concerned about that. But I do have a concern, and I'd like to make a motion to change this rather than four-year to three. And the reason is, I'm really pleased with our mayor. I mean, I think he's done, if you look back over the years he's been on board, he's done phenomenal things, but we may not have that mayor in the future. And if we pass this, they have a four-year term, I just, in my mind, I was torn, three-year, four-year, and four-year might just be too long if there was a mayor that, as a common council or as the public may have concern with, might be just too lengthy. So I'm not sure if it'll be seconded, but I'd like to make a motion to change this ordinance rather than four-year to three-year.
I have a motion by Kellogg to amend the proposed charter ordinance from four years to three years. There is a second? Second by Furkey? Okay. So now, Kellogg, you spoke to your motion. We'll move into alderperson Furkey. I think you were next on the speaking order as well, so we'll go there.
Yes, thank you. I didn't realize that alderperson Kellogg was reading my notes, but, no. I also am very comfortable with the current mayor that we have. There is no term limits on his office or any of these offices. So the citizenry has elected our current mayor three times, I believe, and so I think the general population, or at least the majority of the city residents, voting residents, are happy with your particular work. I agree with alderperson Kellogg that your involvement in nearly every committee is enlightening for a Southern councilman to see how involved you are, and that all being said, your successor may not be the same. And I would hate to see the citizenry maybe on the hook for four years, maybe having voter's remorse. I do understand the ability to maybe start some projects, get your goals put out in front of your city staff and in front of the city council, and I think you have done that. You've been very explicit as far as what you would like to see happen with the city and its path forward. So saying that it's a stumbling block for you now, I wouldn't necessarily agree with that, because you've been here for a long time, and, again, I think the general consensus is that you're doing a good job. But back to alderperson Kellogg's motion, I would like to see it three years rather than the four. Thank you.
Next on the speaking order is alderperson Zurflu.
I guess for me, this is more about the office of mayor. I think longer term does offer some continuity to the position, maybe even, maybe even make it a little more competitive. I did find something out, though, I guess I'm looking to see if this is true, but was this actually on a referendum in the past?
It was, never went to referendum. It was, it was considered as a charter ordinance, maybe 2012, maybe? Right. What went to referendum would have been probably around 2006, when it was proposed that the clerk, the treasurer, and the city attorney be appointed rather than elected. That was the last and only referendum regarding elected officials, I mean, in the past, since I've been here, last 15 years, and I don't think there was any immediately proceeding.
And I do like the idea of a three-year... And I do like the idea of a three-year term, too. It hits an odd number of years, maybe gets some more people out to vote. I guess my preference, though, would be that perhaps this went to referendum. I know there's a motion on the floor right now, but let the voters decide, I guess, how long they want the offices to be. So that's really all, the only comment I had to make.
Alderperson Kubashak, you're next.
Thank you. I spent a little bit of time thinking about this. And this vote should not be a litmus test on how the current mayor is doing. That happens every other spring election. I think with a charter ordinance, a charter ordinance is the most supreme law of the land. And to have it, obviously, it's going to be read twice, but to have it be voted on without thorough discussion, I think is a failure by us. And I'm going to vote no tonight on this because of that reason. Now, I'm not necessarily opposed to the idea of looking at it longer term or, you know, discussing this further. But with the charter ordinance, I need to be provided with proof that the current system is broken to be able to advance and actually change the current status quo. Because right now, the current status quo is a two-year term. And without having that proof or validation of changing it, I think we have to vote default in the negative. And that's kind of where I see it. Like I said, I'm not opposed to talking about it. I'm not opposed to having an ad hoc committee talk about this, talk about a city manager, talk about a city administrator, different things. And we've talked about this prior to myself being on this body, and we've talked about it in Human Resources Committee. It's a case where I think that this is, in my opinion, this is an improper place to be voting on this at this time. And therefore, that is why I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Alderperson Raume, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mostly, I think, the same reasons that Thad had just brought up. I think it needs further discussion, open discussion, really. You know, to have the referral put in and us to come here and just, to talk about it for a short time, I don't think does justice in that sense. And, you know, what I'm hearing, have been hearing a lot of is that it's almost like a reward system in that of what's been done in the last, you know, six years. And to go through it in this type of setting, I don't think is the right way to do that. And again, with what Thad has mentioned, is what is wrong with the system that we have? The two-year term, you know, I'm going to vote against it, too. But the discussion, if we need that, we can have that. I just don't think tonight is the night. And obviously, with a couple nay votes, it's going to go back anyway. So I think we could set up the proper setting to have a full discussion on what people think the length of term should be. But I just don't think it's getting the full airing that it should get in this setting tonight.
Thank you, Alderperson Coth.
I've gotten a number of phone calls on this in regards to the term of mayor. And one of the reoccurring themes that I kept getting in all the phone calls was citizens in the one-month period since the last council meeting didn't feel that there was enough notification given to them or enough information given to them as to why we wanted to change it from two to four. And I was asked that we get more information out to them as to why we want to change it. I do understand that in the two-year term, you spend 18 months working, and then you got to do another six months of groundwork and a campaign. And I understand that. But I agree with Alderpersons Raume and Kubashak that maybe we need to get more public input on this before we proceed, and at least let the public guide the decision a little bit more, even, or agree with Alderperson Zurflu to have it to a referendum. Thanks.
Are there any other requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, the motion is to amend the charter ordinance as it's proposed. Is there another request to speak? Alderperson Kellogg.
Is the motion on the floor to have it three years?
To amend it to be, to amend the proposal to three years.
And is that what the vote's going to be? And if it doesn't pass, then we come back and revisit this next month? Right?
There's a motion to amend the proposal. There'll be a vote. And then there'll be another vote on the passage of that, or whatever the motion would be on that. So there's two steps in the process here.
All right. I'm just, was confused there.
So we're clear. There's a motion to amend the proposal from four to three years, which will go into a vote right now if there's no further request to speak. Seeing no further request to speak, please cast your ballots. Oh, my God. Go years without breaking ties, and we have two of them back-to-back. I am going to vote, God, I don't want to break the tie. I'm going to continue with the path to not break the tie tonight on this. I'm very sensitive to the comments made, and it's tough for me as the incumbent to continue to have this issue brought up, because it sometimes could be viewed as a litmus test. And I appreciate the comments to that effect, because I do suggest that a committee of the whole have a discussion, and I would personally not attend, because I think it's important for the council to settle this issue. And as a private citizen, as I was quoted in the paper saying, I think this is a really important issue for the council to settle. I think for future elections, for future mayors, for future administrations, for city staff, this is an issue that should be addressed. We are in the very far minority of cities to have this model with a two-year term. I think it warrants full discussion. So with that, I will opt to not break the tie, so the motion will fail. With that said, and so the original motion, or the original piece of legislation is still here, which is the first reading. So we'll go into a vote on that unless, well, there's a motion. I guess we have to take a motion, so I'll have to vote in the, and just to clear it. Okay. All right. So is that clear, then? We're going to now, the floor is open for a motion on the original item that's on the agenda, which is the first reading. Councilmembers, what are your wishes regarding the item?
I guess, can I ask a question?
Certainly. Yeah, floor's open for discussion or action.
I know how it's worded in the agenda, but would it work if I made a motion to, I guess, remove voting on this issue and requesting that a committee of the whole meeting address this a little more thoroughly?
So it'd be a motion most likely for postponement, and then the recommendation that the item get taken up by the council president and a committee of the whole scheduled, I guess would be the way to do it. So...
Sounds good to me, as long as...
...to postpone. Let the city attorney to pick it up. Sure.
Okay.
Well, right. But as long as everyone recognizes this is the, we did have the first reading of the ordinance, whether you, you know, whether you vote or not, a unanimous vote would have made it not necessary to have the second reading. But, I mean, we're still considering that the first reading happened today. So whether you have a committee of the whole or it goes to the next meeting, I mean, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that. So, right, if you want to refer it to committee of the whole for a meeting, the only thing, obviously, it would not, I mean, unless you're going to have that with, before the next council meeting, because it's really, for the next term, for the mayor who's in, who wins the election, they would probably need to know, you know, by next month. So I guess if you want to get it resolved by next month, then the committee of the whole would ideally be before the next council meeting in October.
So said another way, the council has to decide for the next term by December 1st. I think that's a question I've been...
Right. I guess, yeah, right. I guess so you could say November. Right, right. I mean, people who take nomination papers should understand how long the term, and register to be a candidate should understand that. So I guess you would have the November meeting. I was thinking it was October, September. Yeah. So as long as it went to the second reading by the November meeting, that would be fine.
Is that understood by everyone? Okay. So your motion, Alderperson Zurflu, is to refer this item to the committee of the whole?
Yes, if that's within the rules.
It sounded like what you were trying to say. Is there a second to refer this item to the committee of the whole? Second by Kellogg. Any further discussion on the item? Seeing no, Alderperson Raume, you're first. A nay vote would be, opposition to sending it to the committee of the whole. So the item still is not disposed of. We would, if the motion failed, we would then, the floor would be open for another motion. Yep. Are there any other requests to speak? So the motion is to refer this item to a committee of the whole. Seeing no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots. Thank you. We'll move on to item number eight, item D. Consider a resolution exempting the City of Wisconsin Rapids from paying Wood County library tax in 2018. See the resolution attachment number five. Councilmembers, this is one we do annually. Probably some of you are used to the routine. Are there, is there a motion on the floor, a request to speak? I'll call for a motion, I guess. There is not a motion on the floor. Councilmembers, what are your wishes regarding this item? We have a motion by Raume to approve. Is there a second? Second by Dolan. Any discussion? Seeing no request to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item 8E, consider resolution for the urban forestry aid. See the resolution attachment number six. This is an item that came from financing property. That was considered there. This is a formal resolution. I think it's pretty straightforward, unless there's anything, Joe, that you'd like to provide any clarity on. Councilmembers, I entertain a motion on the item.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Furkey. And is there a second? Second by Zurflu. Any requests to speak on this item? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
8F, public hearing regarding the vacation of all of the 10-foot-wide north-south alley between the north right-of-way of Taylor Avenue and the south right-of-way of Strodeeman Avenue, being adjacent to lots 1 through 8, of Block 2 of Daley's Platte, being part of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 20, Township 22 North, Range 6 East, City of Wisconsin Rapids, Wood County, Wisconsin. Public hearing held in July was invalid due to insufficient notice, in which I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against that item for the first time? For the second time, anyone wishing to speak on that item? And for the third, Joe?
Just to make a, is it appropriate for me to comment?
Following the public hearing? Anyone for the third and final time? With that, I will close the public hearing. Joe?
So this particular area, if you recollect, is being used to some extent. This alley is being used by private residents. There is no intent to improve it, and therefore, the staff recommendation was to allow it to be vacated accordingly.
Sure.
And the reason, this came up in July at the meeting, and I worked with the city engineer on it, and we realized that we had actually noticed the public hearing to be held on the 25th, you know, the proposed meeting that we decided to meet on, the regular scheduled meeting on the 18th. So we realized this in August before the final resolution, so that's why it's coming back tonight.
All right. So item G is action on that resolution vacating all of 10-foot-wide north-south alley between the north right-of-way of Taylor and south right-of-way of Strodeeman, being adjacent to lots 1 through 8, Block 2 of Daley's Platte, being part of northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 20, Township 22, Range 6 East, City of Wisconsin Rapids, Wood County, Wisconsin. Resolution number seven in your packets. Councilmembers, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'll make a motion to approve as stated.
A motion by Zurflu, and a second by Dolan. Any discussion? Any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item nine is a report of the Planning Commission meeting held on August 22nd, which, tab here. The Planning Commission met at 5:00 p.m. on September 11th in the first-floor conference room of City Hall. Actually, that's the, sorry about that. Planning Commission met at 4:00 p.m. on August 22nd in the first-floor conference room of City Hall. Members present included myself, Shane Burkhardt, Lee Tao, Fran Aaron, Joe Terry, and Alderperson Todd Furkey. Member absent was Tim Burkhauser. Others in attendance are on file in the clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 4:00 p.m. Item one is approval of the report of the August 14th Planning Commission meeting. There was a motion by Aaron, second by Tao, to approve the report from the August 14th Planning Commission meeting, and that motion carried five to one with Furkey in the negative. Item two is action on Plan 170591, Roush Companies LLC. Conditional use to allow boarding houses in the R3 multifamily residential district. This item was postponed at the August 14th meeting. There was a motion by Burkhardt, second by Terry, to approve the Roush Companies Plan 170591, with the conditions recommended by staff, adding the condition that the building will be locked to prevent unauthorized access to residents, non-residents, sorry. Motion failed on a three-to-three vote. Item three, update discussion on the zoning rewrite project with Civitex. Tim Schweki and Charlie Handy presented a report on 8th Street that was covered, that covered options to retrofit the corridor. They also provided an overview of Article 14 Wellhead Protection Overlay District, Article 15 Downtown Design Overlay District, and Article, and 55 fences. I'm not sure if that, that might be a typo in there. Updating discussion on the comprehensive plan was item number four, and there was no update. Item five was adjournment, and the meeting adjourned at 5:43 p.m. With that, that is the report of the Planning Commission from August 22nd. That's listed under item number nine. With that, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the report withholding item two, the action plan on the Roush properties.
Motion to approve the balance of the report with the exception of item number two. And then there's a second by Furkey. Are there any requests to speak on that item, on that report with the exception of item number two?
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. Item number two is withheld. That leaves item number two, and the floor is open.
I guess I withheld it, and I wasn't sure if we just approved it if it would fail, but I'll make a motion to not approve Action Plan 17-0591.
I'll go to, defer to the city attorney for clarity on the motion, because I think it's sort of a double negative, so...
Right. I would prefer affirmative motions, so you can make the motion to approve and then vote against it. But otherwise, we're going to have to do another motion if it's not denied, but that's fine. I'm not going to...
But your objective...
That, I guess that makes sense to me. So I'll make a motion to... So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve action plan seventeen dash zero five nine one.
So we have a motion to approve the recommendation of the plan commission. Is there a second? And we got a second by Raume, uh, to approve the recommendation, which is, uh, which the motion failed. So it's a, in effect, carrying forward the recommendation from the plan commission for clarity. Anybody wishing to speak in, uh, on the motion? Seeing no rec- oh, Alder Person Kubashak, you're first.
This is more just a clarification. I, I guess as far as I'm concerned, I'm voting no on this, I think. Because I want to, we should have just kept it in there, and then it would have failed. So ultimately, voting a would be allowing this, and voting nay would be disallowing this. Okay. So, yeah, I'll vote nay then.
No, the motion, the motion failed at the plan commission. So the motion, the motion did not pass. So in effect, the request was denied. He made a motion to approve.
Oh, no, to approve the, the, the conditional use permit, I guess is what I would have preferred.
What's the action you wanted?
So I, I, I made this, uh, more confusing, I think, than it needed to be. But, um, I wanted to, I want to vote the same way Alder Person Kubashak is, so.
We moved into the discussion. I would have preferred to, um, all right. So we've got a motion, well, you could rescind your motion if you wanted to rescind your motion. I'll give you the opportunity to do that. And you're going to take back your second.
I will rescind it then.
So the floor has been reset for action, um, which, uh, I'm not going to guide you guys on this one. You guys can tell me what you want to do. Where do you want to go?
I'd just like to read from you the guide, Department, Parliamentary Procedure for Local Governments in Wisconsin. Some of you may be familiar with Larry Larmour. Negative motion should be avoided if at all possible. Motion typically proposed that the group take a particular action, and if voted down, the group does not take the action. If a motion is worded in the negative, that the group not take an action, it does not follow that the defeat of the motion requires the group to take the action. Ordinarily, to avoid ambiguity, motions expressed in the negative should be ruled out of order, and every effort made to express the motion in the affirmative. That's where I. So, I mean, basically, the applicant applied for the permit. And what, ideally, what we would do is you would, you would decide that up or down. Yes, or I would be to approve the permit for the conditional use. No, would be not to approve it. That's what was before the plan commission. That's what the motion was before the plan commission. They decided to have a tie and, and really not refer it without action. So really, it's like it's before you again, and how would you vote? That would be an affirmative motion.
How about this? Can we make a motion to accept the referral of the plan commission disallowing it? Because that's technically not a negative motion.
Yes, it is. It's a negative motion regarding the action, uh, the permit. The permit is the thing that's in front of you. It's not necessarily what the plan commission did. They tied, they didn't make a recommendation to you, really. Uh, the minutes probably should have reflected that it's referred to the council with no recommendation, rather than a failure of the motion.
True, but what about, because we're approving the consent agenda as.
We are not. This has been held out for separate action.
Now I, I realize that, but I mean.
Previously that, okay. So, um, the question is, do you want to approve the conditional use permit or not? So we've got a mo- we've got a request to speak first by Alder Person Furkey, and then I'm going to follow the speaking order, if you wouldn't mind. We don't have a motion, correct. There's no motion on the floor. Right. We've got a speaking order, and I'm going to follow the speaking order, and then we'll, then we'll, any of these folks that requested to speak could make a motion. Maybe get on the order, Tom.
So we held it out for discussion, and I want to discuss it. I want to make a motion to deny Plan seventeen dash zero five nine one Rouge Companies LLC for a conditional use permit.
He can, he can take a motion, make the motion to deny the permit. I'm not going to call it out of order. I think they know what they mean, and at this point, it's going to, to unwind the confusion that's in the room is going to take us fifteen minutes. That's a motion, we have a motion to deny the, the request. We have a second by Alder Person Raume. Okay. So you've withdrawn your request to speak. Are there any other requests to speak? Unless you want to word the motion the way it should be worded? I'm just afraid it's going to add more confusion to their. Alder Person Furkey, uh, okay, there we go. The motion, the re- correct. The motion is to deny the conditional use, or deny the request. Any requests to speak? Okay. No requests to speak. Alder Person Coth.
So I just want to be clear in this for all the people. By denying this permit, this will kill the action, and this house will not be built on Strawberry Lane, because they will not get the permit. I just want to be absolutely sure for all these folks that come here tonight, that this issue is going to stop here. That it's not going to come back in some other way, shape, or form, that when we vote on this, it's done.
This request would be defeated. So I, and I don't think anybody can make the certainty that there wouldn't be a request by them or anyone else. But I don't know what the recourse is, or how many conditional use permits can be applied for, um, of the city. But, so, just so that's clear, right? I mean, the, the action tonight would be on the request that's been requested of the city, which is the conditional use, uh, for the boarding house. Any further requests to speak? Don't even say that. All right. Please cast your ballots. There's no other request to speak. It's an affirmative vote. It kills the request.
Okay. The, the motion was to deny the conditional use permit, and that motion carried eight i's, zero nays.
All right. I think we're all understood in the action that was taken. The request of the city for the conditional use permit was denied. Okay. Everybody understood. All right. Very good. If you folks want to leave, you can do so, I'd ask you to do so quietly. All right. Item number ten, the report of the planning commission meeting held on September eleventh. The planning commission met at five PM, uh, PM on September eleventh. Excuse me, can you please leave quietly, so we can continue on with our long agenda tonight? Thank you. Keep your conversations out in the hallway. Planning commission met at five PM on September eleventh in the first-floor conference room of City Hall. Members present included myself, Shane Burkhart. Uh, included myself, Shane Burkhart, Fran Aaron, Lee Tao, Joe Terry, and Alder Person Furkey. Member present, absent was Tim Burkhauser. Others in attendance is on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at five PM. Uh, item one is approval of the report from the August twenty-second, twenty-seventeen planning commission meeting. Motion by Furkey, second by Aaron, to approve the request from the August twenty-second, twenty-second, twenty-seventeen planning commission meeting, and that motion carried. Item two, Plan one seven zero six seven zero Cranberry Woods, Wisconsin Rapids LLC. The applicant is requesting site plan approval to allow a forty-unit townhouse development within the R-three multiple-family residential district. The subject property is located at the northwest corner of Sixteenth Street South and Pepper Avenue. The commission discussed the project with the developers and clarified questions on parking access and layouts of the units. There was a motion by Aaron, second by Burkhart, to approve and allow a forty-unit townhouse development within the R-three mult- multiple-family residential district, subject to, uh, the conditions outlined. Uh, that motion carried unanimously. Item three is discussion on the Soul Smart Program and potential recommendations to update city regulations as they pertain to solar energy systems. The commission was supportive of looking for ways to improve regulations as they pertain to energy, solar energy systems. Staff will prepare recommendations to update the current zoning code, regulations as they pertain to solar energy systems. Item four was adjournment. There was a motion and a second to adjourn. That motion carried. Meeting adjourned at five forty PM. And that is the report on item number ten. Councilmembers, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Furkey. Is there a second? Second by Hep. Any discussion on the report? Alder Person Dolan, you're first.
Just as a matter of interest, because it's in my district, is there a timeline on this forty-unit townhouse?
We haven't closed on the sale of property that the city, that was previously agreed to by the council. That will happen, um, we understood in October, uh, and they plan to break ground this fall. And the first unit will be on, or first building, uh, will be online in summer, so June or July, I think, was the.
So it's still next, okay.
Yeah, right. They, they won't have anything open until that time, June or July next year.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Okay. Seeing no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight i's, zero nays.
Item eleven, standing council committee reports. Item A is a report of the Finance and Property Committee held on September twelfth.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance Property Committee met at five PM Tuesday, September twelfth, two thousand seventeen, in the first-floor conference room at the City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Mayor Ruink, Tim DeSorcey, Joe Terry, Adam Teagan, Paul Shabelski, Alder Person Furkey, and Kubashak, Melissa Reiker, and Steph Schmidt from the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce, Joe Bachman, Wisconsin Rapids City Times, Stephanie Hartman, and Stephen Kipfer from Central Wisconsin Cultural Center. Item number one, call to order. The meeting was called to order at five PM. Item two, consider a special events application submitted by Central Wisconsin BMX for the North Central Gold Cup Final BMX to be held on September twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth at the BMX Track. The applicant is requesting that the Eastside Compost Site be closed on Saturday, September twenty-third, for event parking. It was moved by Dolan, second by Zerflu, to approve the special events application submitted by Central Wisconsin BMX for the North Central Gold Cup Final BMX to be held on September twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth at the BMX Track. The Eastside Compost Site will be closed on Saturday, September twenty-third, for event parking. That motion carried. Item three, consider a special events application submitted by Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce for an event called Friday the thirteenth Halloween Extravaganza to be held on Friday, October thirteenth, at Veterans Park. It was moved by Dolan, second by Zerflu, to approve a special events application submitted by Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce for the event to be held on Friday, October thirteenth, at Veterans Park. The motion included closing Second Street from Oak to East Grand Avenue during the event. That motion carried. Item four, consider for approval a grant application request for a thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven-dollar Department of Justice Assistance Grant. It was moved by Zerflu, second by Dolan, to approve a grant application request for thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars Department of Justice Assistance Grant. That motion carried. Item five, consider for approval a grant application request for a twenty-five thousand dollar Wisconsin DNR Urban Forestry Grant. Motion by Dolan, second by Zerflu, to approve the grant application request for twenty-five thousand dollars Wisconsin DNR Urban Forestry Grant. That motion carried. Item six, consider for approval a request to transfer sixty thousand dollars from the Public Works Construction Fund to the sidewalk maintenance account. Motion by Dolan, second by Zerflu, to approve a request to transfer sixty thousand dollars from the Public Works Construction Fund to the sidewalk maintenance account. That motion carried. Item seven, presentation by community development on options for development of city-owned property located at Twenty-Fifth Avenue South and Alton Street. Community Development Director Adam Tagan discussed options for development of city-owned property located at Twenty-Fifth Ave. South and Alton. Item eight, consider for approval a real estate sales agreement to purchase real estate located at one-six-one Third Street North, city of Wisconsin Rapids, the former Eagles Club. Tax parcels thirty-four dash zero eight one-five-seven and thirty-four dash zero eight one-five-six. Motion by Zerflu, second by Dolan, to approve a real estate sales agreement to purchase real estate located at one-six-one Third Street North, city of Wisconsin Rapids, the former Eagles Club. Tax parcels thirty-four dash zero eight one-five-seven and thirty-four dash zero eight one-five-six. That motion carried. Note, the first tax parcel number in the agenda was thirty-eight dash zero eight one-five-seven-four, but the accurate tax parcel number for that property is thirty-four dash zero eight one-five-seven. Item nine, consider for approval Resolution Number twenty-three dash two thousand seventeen, Budget Amendment Number Four. Motion by Dolan, second by Zerflu, to approve Resolution Number twenty-three dash two thousand seventeen, Budget Amendment Number Four. That motion carried. Item ten, beverage operator license applications. Motion by Dolan, second by Zerflu, to approve the following beverage operator licenses, and they are on file at the clerk's office. That motion carried. Item eleven, audit of the bills. Motion by Zerflu, second by Dolan, to approve check numbers six-eight-nine-zero-five through six-nine-three-five-eight, and manual check numbers nine-nine-three-two-seven through nine-nine-four-four-six. That motion carried. Item twelve, set the next meeting date. The next regular scheduled Finance Property Committee meeting will occur on October tenth, two thousand seventeen. Item thirteen, in open session, the committee will vote to go into closed sess- session under section nineteen point eight-five, parant one, parant E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Motion by Dolan, second by Zerflu, to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken. Motion carried, two i's, zero nays. Sub A, in closed session, the committee will have preliminary discussions on a proposed development agreement with the Southwood County YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club of the Wisconsin Rapids area. In closed session, the committee had a preliminary discussion regarding the proposed development agreement with the Southwood County YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club of the Wisconsin Rapids area. Sub B, in closed session, the committee will discuss a lease proposal from the Central Wisconsin Cultural Center for space in the Centralia Center. In closed session, the committee discussed a lease proposal from the Central Wisconsin Cultural Center for space in the Centralia Center. Sub C, the committee may return to open session and take action, or make recommendations regarding item thirteen B. It was moved by Zerflu, second by Dolan, to return to open session. Roll call vote was taken. Motion carried, two i's, zero nays. Motion by Dolan, second by Zerflu, to approve a lease proposal from the Central Wisconsin Cultural Center for space in the Centralia Center. A forty-eight-month lease with the city or the cultural center being allowed to terminate the lease after the initial twelve months with ninety days' notice. Rent shall increase three percent after each twelve-month period. The initial twelve-month lease rate shall be twenty-one hundred dollars per month. That motion carried. Item fourteen, adjournment. It was moved by Zerflu, second by Dolan, to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at six forty-seven PM. And I will make a motion to approve these minutes with the, uh, correction that Alder Person Hep was excused from that meeting.
A motion to approve by Zerflu. Is there a second? Second by Furkey. We'll move into, uh, discussion. Now we're ready. Any requests to speak? Alder Person Kellogg, you're first.
Basically, I'd just like to make a comment. Under number seven, where we're talking about selling, uh, plot of land on Twenty-Fifth Avenue South and Alton Street. I like to have the Finance and Property Committee, I talked to Adam Tagan with regard to this. I look at the, uh, specifications that we wanted some of the homes to look like and sound like in a development. But I like to add that those homes be three bedrooms and two baths and two-car garages. We need to, in my opinion, beef up, beef up the quality of the housing that we have in Wisconsin Rapids if we're going to attract, um, professional and, uh, people to our district. So, um, consider, I hope that the committee considers that in the specifications that come forth in the next month or so.
Alder Person Kubashak, you're next.
Yeah, just a quick, uh, question for, uh, Joe Terry. Um, as far as closing the, uh, compost site on the east side this Saturday, do we got good signage for anybody that would be coming down there so that they can kind of turn around?
Yeah, we'll have the site signed while to let the public know that the compost site is closed.
I think a further clarification, um, save me a message later, but I think some folks thought it was closing for the season, uh, from Saturday. And so I got some comments and calls from folks, and no plan was just for the Saturday for the BMX tournament. So if you could have that adjusted as well. Any further requests to speak? Alder Person Zerflu.
After this, there is one more report. I forgot that that ended up not being a committee of the whole.
Alderperson Coth, you're next.
On this rental space for the Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, I've gotten a couple emails on that. And just wanted some clarification if anything was discussed. It looks like this Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater was also competing for the same space. And from what I gather, they had asked for it a while back. That's what I'm getting out of this. I just want to bring that up and see what anyone else had on it.
So the question relates to the community theater's interest in renting the Montessori space?
Yes.
So I can't go in detail what was discussed in closed session, but I can say that the folks that were there were aware of all of the interest from the parties. So, and the dynamics there within. And I think they made the decision, from what I understood, the decision was made with all the information that was available to the city at the time. So I don't know, Alderperson Zerflu, if you want to speak further about that. But I believe that all interests were represented at that time. The only proposal in front of the committee was formally was to offer that to the cultural center. But I can say that all the information was shared with the committee that was in attendance that evening. Or Alderperson Dolan, you were there too, I guess.
Yeah, I would agree. And I think, I don't want to divulge the closed session either, but I believe in the open session when we discussed a little bit more. You know, I'm a believer in giving other, all entities, you know, a chance. And the cultural center is something different, and they deserve a spot. And they needed a spot. So, you know, that was what was on the table. So I thought that was the way to go.
Any further follow-up questions, Alderperson Coth? Okay. Alderperson Dolan, you're next. Looks like on the speaking order. All right, you're done. Any further requests to speak on the report? All right, see none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
And the report of the Property and Finance Committee from Wednesday, September 13th, 2017, at 5:00 PM in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Committee members Zerflu and Dolan were present. Alderperson HEP was excused. Also attending, Mayor Zach Vruink, Joe Terry, Tim DeSorcey, Alderperson Coth, Raome, Furkey, Brett Salshider and Dan Wiegand, Jennifer Bemke, Rosemary Felice, Mary Jo Carson, and Joe Bachman, Wisconsin Rapid City Times. Item one, called to order. Meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item two, update on Aquatic Center development at Witterfield. Mayor Vruink gave an update on the progress of the Aquatic Center development at Witterfield. The update included information about a city staff viewing of the municipal aquatic centers in Appleton and Oshkosh. Director of Public Works, Joe Terry, Alderperson Furkey and Finance Director, Tim DeSorcey, provided points of interest from the visits to the aquatic facilities. No action was taken on this item. Item three, discuss aquatics funding options regarding non-city municipal capital contributions. Aquatics funding options regarding non-city municipal capital contributions were discussed. No action was taken on this item. Item four, discuss the design and construction schedule of the Aquatic Center. The design and construction schedule of the Aquatic Center was discussed. No action was taken on this item. Item five, Capitol Campaign Committee and General Fundraising Update. Formation of a Capitol Campaign Committee was discussed. A general fundraising update was delivered by Mayor Vruink. No action was taken on this item. Item six, adjourn. Motion is second to adjourn. That motion carried. Meeting adjourned at 6:00 PM. And I will move for adoption of these minutes.
A motion by Zerflu, seconded by Kubasak. Any discussion on the minutes on that report? See no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item C, the report of the Public Works Committee meeting held on September 5th. Alderperson Raome?
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. A list of all others attending is on file in the Clerk's Office. Item one, called to order. The meeting was called to order by Chairperson Raome at 6:00 PM. Item two, review the DPW report. The report was reviewed. The report is available for viewing on the City of Wisconsin Rapids website. Item three, discuss DOT's decision to remove the Second Avenue Expressway to Gainer Avenue project from the Six-Year Plan. There was discussion about writing a letter of importance to the impacted residents. Alderperson Coth asked about allowing the city to complete the project and be reimbursed by the DOT. Item four, review proposed 2018 Public Works Capital Projects/Budget Estimates. The preliminary Public Works Construction Fund budget was reviewed. The impact that electric and other utilities have on street projects was discussed. Item five, discuss referral to review alternate side parking ordinances. No action was taken on this item. There was discussion about vehicles parked on lawns or streets and increasing communication between code enforcement and police enforcement of parking violation. Item six, discuss condition and plans for multi-use trail along Second Avenue South between Hurley Street and Seneca Road. It was moved by Coth and seconded by Raome to remove the multi-use trail along Second Avenue South between Hurley Street and Seneca Avenue, Second, Seneca Road. Motion carried. Item seven, review the referral list. Referral number 22 was removed from the list. Item eight was motion to, was to adjourn. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Kellogg to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 6:52 PM. And with that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
A motion to approve and a second by Coth. Any other discussion on the reports? See no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 11D is a report of the Human Resources Committee meeting held on September 12th. Alderperson Furkey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. The Human Resources Committee met at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, September 12th, 2017, in the third floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. Also present were Mayor Vruink, Sue Schill, Joe Terry, Alexa Schultz, Tim DeSorcey, Cindy Schlafsting, Debbie Nash, Paul Shabelski, Travis Shalinski, Andy Barnett, John Prus from M3 Insurance, Kevin Anderson and Jay Bemke. Item one was called to order. That's a typo. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM by Chairperson Furkey. Human Resources Committee met at the Human Resources... Let's say that again. Appoint a Human Resources Committee member to the ADA Advisory Committee was item two. A nomination by Kellogg by Alderperson Furkey and a second by Kubasak to nominate Alderperson Kellogg to that ADA Committee. And nominations were closed. A unanimous ballot was cast for Alderperson Kellogg to be appointed to the ADA Advisory Committee, and that motion carried. Item number three was consider and approve an agreement with Security Administrative Services for city health insurance, third-party administration, for an additional six months commencing January 1st, 2018. It was moved by Furkey, seconded by Kellogg, to approve an agreement with Security Administrative Services for the city health insurance, third-party administration, for an additional six months commencing January 1st, 2018. That motion carried. Item number four was consider and approve deductibles, out-of-pocket maximums and out-of-network co-insurance amounts for the city's health insurance effective January 1st, 2018. It was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kellogg to approve the recommended deductibles, out-of-pocket maximums and out-of-network co-insurance amounts for the city's health insurance effective January 1st, 2018. A single deductible, $1,500. Family deductible, $3,000. Out-of-pocket maximum, in-network, $2,100. Family out-of-pocket maximum, in-network, $4,200. Single out-of-pocket, out-of-network, $4,200. Family out-of-pocket maximum, out-of-network, $8,400. Out-of-network co-insurance, 70%. Motion carried, two ayes and one nay, with Alderman Kubasak voting in the negative. Item number five was consider and approve a health and dental insurance rates to be effective January 1st, 2018. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Furkey to approve the recommended health and dental insurance rates to be effective January 1st, 2018. Health, single, $727. Health, two-person, $1,467. Health, family, $2,100. Dental, $35. Dental, family, $95. That motion carried. Item number six, consider and approve employee premium contribution amounts to be effective January 1st, 2018. It was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kellogg to approve the employee premium amounts, health insurance for all employees except for police and fire union members. Employee premium contribution of 10% or 5% if completed the HRA and TOFIT assessments. Dental insurance for all employees except for police and fire union members. Employee premium contribution of 50%. That motion carried. Item number seven, consider and approve city contributions to employee health savings accounts. It was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kellogg to approve the city contributions to employee health savings account in the amounts of $375 per year for a single payer and $750 per year for a family. And that motion carried. Item number eight, in open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under Section 19.85, Pair 1, Pair E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. In closed session, the committee will discuss the negotiation strategy regarding collective bargaining with the city's public safety and DPW unions. It was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kubasak to go into closed session. A roll call vote was taken. The motion carried, three ayes and zero nays. In closed session, the committee discussed negotiation strategy regarding collective bargaining with the city's public safety and Department of Public Works unions. The committee will adjourn in closed session, and it was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Furkey to adjourn in closed session, and that motion carried. And I don't have a time that we adjourned. So we don't have a time?
5:18.
Okay. Okay. With that, I would move for adoption of the Human Resources Committee.
We have a motion to approve by Furkey and a second by Kellogg. We'll move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Alderperson Kubasak, you're first.
Yeah, I would like to, and forgive me if I'm out of order, but hold out item number four for a separate vote and discussion. Do I make a motion with that to hold out item four? How do I do that?
We have a motion and a second to approve, right? So, yeah, I'll call for unanimous consent on holding out. You said just number four?
Number four, yeah.
Is there unanimous consent in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? All right, we have unanimous consent. So item four will be held out from that report. With that, are there any further requests to speak? See no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, that leaves item number four. Council members, what are your... We had a request to hold it out. Alderperson Kubasak, vote to you.
Yeah, as far as this is concerned, the reason why I voted in the negative on this, and I'm going to vote on the negative on this again. My interest is not to sway anybody else in terms of denying this, because we do got to move forward. But I want to, I guess, make a statement with my vote in terms of, and I've talked about this ever since the first day I came onto the council, especially with the Human Resources Committee, that I want to do what I can to make sure that we retain and be able to recruit the best employees, the best staff. And one thing that I think that everybody is very well aware of is the top 10% will relocate if we cannot provide them with certain amenities. And whether it's pay, whether it's health insurance, deductible costs, anything else like that. And if there... I think that we were presented prematurely with this vote, and granted, there's timelines here, that we have to move forward with. But one of the things that I brought up in the committee was finding out what the actual cost is if the employees remained at the same cost that they were moving forward, and the organization itself would actually absorb that cost into the, for the 2018 employee contribution share. There were some numbers that were talked about. But again, it's a case where, and I understand health insurance is getting more and more expensive, and we need to find innovative ways of paying for it. But again, to be able to retain the best people, to be able to recruit the best people for our organization, for the citizenry, for the taxpayers, to get the best bang out of their buck, I think that we need to, as an organization, look at what we can do to make us as competitive as any other, at least, public sector employee. So that's all I have to say.
Alderperson Zerflu, you're next.
I would just like Mr. DeSorcey's input if he can give it on the deductibles.
I'm assuming that everyone read the email I sent out on Monday. Basically, it's just trying to explain kind of where we came from. And, you know, based on our current health insurance claim costs, and it's trending upward, you know, right now, we're basically down to one month's of reserves in the fund, which our benchmark is usually about three months' reserves. So we're bound to about $350,000, $375,000 of reserves. And that's as of August 31st. And September, the preliminary, halfway through the month, it's not looking any better. So obviously, the fund is operating at a deficit, which necessitates that we increase the premiums. When we first went into the renewal, we first got a back renewal from Security Administrative Services for around 22.26%. And obviously, from a budgetary standpoint, that equates to about $670,000. I apologize, I lost my power on my laptop, so I can't remember the... I'm just trying to pick the figures off the top of my head. So obviously, that would be very, very difficult, if not impossible, to meet in a budgetary situation. So we look to, you know, lower that renewal rate. We negotiated additional discounts with Security Administrative Services that lowered it to 6.15%. That equates to about a $500,000 roughly budgetary impact. The increase in deductible, which is, we're increasing the single deductible by $200, and the two-person and family deductible, but they're both considered family, $400. And that basically lowered the renewal to 12.5%, which is about a $300 and some odd thousand dollar budgetary impact. So obviously, when you kind of look at, you know, health insurance, yes. I mean, it's a very challenging environment out there right now. I think a lot of organizations are going through is like how to provide, you know, how to pay for healthcare, but at the same time, offer an affordable and good benefit. And, but just from a budgetary standpoint, when you're looking at that, you know, your state aids are basically flat. I mean, we don't get a lot of increases from our state aids. I mean, we don't get a lot of increases from our state aids, property tax, we all know that we have levy limits that we're subject to, and that's based on net new construction, so typically, the net new construction number allows us to raise the levy by approximately a hundred thousand, a hundred, you know, give or take, depending on what that comes through, and that's what will be in this year. State aids, our transportation aids, actually, we took a hit last year, you know, shared revenue has increased for many years, and when you take those two revenue sources, that equate to seventy percent of your funding for your entire budget, and you're looking at, yeah, a hundred thousand maybe, and you're just alone for health insurance, you're looking at facing at a sixty percent with no changes in plan design of five hundred thousand, you know, we have to be a little bit proactive. You know, based on some, you know, research that was done and stuff, you know, our deductible levels are lower than our comparables, so, I mean, we do have a good health plan design, you know, from a recruiting standpoint, you know, it all depends on what your comparables are out there, and, you know, and I think that, you know, our health plan is very attractive and affordable.
Yeah, I understand what Alderperson Kubasak was saying about wanting to retain the best employees, but I also understand the cost of health insurance, and it's something that's going up, and maybe, just to throw this out over to the Human Resource Committee personnel, where I work, what they've done this year is they've put the focus more on the individual responsibility to be proactive and be more healthy, so you're not utilizing the insurance as much to keep the costs down, and I believe there must be the something around here, because when I come down here to pick up mail or whatever, I see the signs around City Hall about making healthier choices, and I believe maybe the employees here do have something similar to what we have at my work with the biometric screening and the health coaching session. What my place of employment has done this year is they, where I work, they will offer, they will make a, they will pay ninety percent of your health insurance premium, and that leaves the employee responsible for ten percent of it. However, they've now made it mandatory that every employee needs to go through the biometric screening, has to go through the health wellness questions, and then has to have a one meeting with a health coach, and if you fail to complete those three tasks, you will then be responsible for twenty percent of your insurance premiums, as opposed to ten. I think maybe if that's something that the Human Resources Committee could possibly consider exploring, it could possibly encourage people to be healthier, take care of themselves, it would keep the cost of insurance down, and maybe that might just be an idea for the happy medium in between there.
Alderperson Furkey?
Thank you for your comments, Alderman Coth and Alderman Kubasak. Just echoing our finance director's statements, we are going in the hole, right? We're self-funded, our health insurance. The health insurance that we provide to our city employees is one of the best in the area, if not the best. So, losing employees because of the health insurance, I don't think is a legitimate concern. We do need to stay ahead of the curve here, and I hate to say ahead of the curve, but we got to stop the slide, and by the end of the year, I think we're, our reserves are probably going to be next to nothing. So, that's not a good, healthy position to put ourselves in as a city, and we also need to be fiscally responsible to our taxpayers, too. So, the action that was done at the Human Resources Committee, I think, was justified, certainly justified, and I sure appreciate the efforts that Ms. Schill and Mr. De Sorcey did, working with M3 to get those rates a little bit more favorable than what they started out at.
And I think just to close the loop on Alderperson Coth's suggestions, we do that. It's not quite, the county's a bit more aggressive than the city is, I would say, so to Alderperson Furkey's comments, the city is taking a gentler approach, I think, in terms of incentivizing people to participate in those programs, but we have the same, similar setup, just with a different premium contribution amount from that. Are there any further requests to speak? See no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots. Oh, we had a motion to approve, sorry about that, we held it out, thank you. Is there a motion, someone wishes to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve item four on the Human Resources Committee agenda.
Approve to deny.
We got a second by Furkey, please cast your ballots.
That motion carried with six ayes and two nays.
Item number twelve, miscellaneous reports, item one, the Southwood County Airport Commission meeting held August 3rd, item two, the Housing Authority meeting held on July 26th, the McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees meeting held on July 19th, item four, the Park and Recreation Commission held on August 9th, item five, the Waste Water Treatment Commission held on July 5th, 2nd of August, August 16th, and September 6th, and item six, the Fire Department Monthly Report for August. Councilmembers, what are your wishes regarding those reports?
Make a motion to accept the balance of the reports.
A motion by Coth. Okay, is there a verbal second?
Second.
By Kellogg? Are there any requests to speak? See no requests to speak, just cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item thirteen, referral of communication to committees. Alderperson Kellogg.
I have a referral, I brought this, it's in, a packet's in front of you, I brought this to the Common Council in 2014, and I guess I want to respond that they were quite excited about it, but we never referred it to a committee, and I guess my concern, in my district, I have a couple condemned homes, I have lots that are empty because of, the homes are burned out, I know of a lot, for example, right across from Water and Light, it's a beautiful lot, but it's empty, and I think we all have those types of situations in all of our districts. Well, those lots are not bringing in any revenue to, or little revenue, to our city. Well, we just talked about how benefits are going up, we talked about salaries going up, and Richfield, Minnesota, it's a suburb of Minneapolis, and it's almost mirrors the types of homes and community that we have in Wisconsin Rapids, and they developed a program twenty-five years ago, so it's not a new program, and it's been successful for twenty-five years, and they have some, they have quite a few small homes, ranches, small lots, and what they've done is that they develop a plan in which people can purchase these lots, and there's a motivation, they give motivation to do that by getting them some funds to do that, and they build, they can build on these lots based on certain specifications that the city has provided. For example, three-bedroom, a three-bedroom home, two baths, two-car garage, and before you receive the funding to help build on those lots, they have to submit a plan to the city, and the city will approve it based on those specifications. And I've visited, and I'm familiar with a number of these homes, and they're fantastic homes. What happens, they bring up the value, if it's a condemned home, and the home was turned down, or knocked down, and they rebuild, all the value of the homes in the area went up, those homes are nice, and a three-bedroom home, for example, in Wisconsin Rapids, you might have children attending the public schools, the school district will get under eight thousand dollars per student by attending, that helps their budget, by building these homes, and I'm assuming you would have a local builder, therefore, we have employment, by building these homes, I'm assuming, too, that the supplies for those homes will be purchased from our, within the economy within Wisconsin Rapids, and so I want to refer this to the finance and property, and maybe the community development, to just explore this, and I went up there this last weekend, and I got the card from a woman that's in charge of this, and there's two people that are in charge of this, and they've been working on it for the twenty-four, twenty-five years, and they said they would be happy to have conference calls, visits, to get engaged with our community if we like, and they can tell us the ups and downs of what happened over those twenty-five years, and we can learn from it. But maybe we can start to look at developing the, these empty lots, I mean, we talk about millions of dollars put in downtown, we talk about the Riverview Hospital, putting monies in there, and when we get new employees, they're going to move out to Grand Rapids, they're going to move someplace else. Well, why not build some of these quality homes right within our own city? So, I'd like to have them explored, and hopefully, it could come to fruition, and we could start to generate some growth with new development within our city, so food for thought, and I hope it comes to fruition. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Alderperson Furkey?
Thank you. So this is just more of a comment, I guess I would like some input from our city attorney, not to beat a dead horse again and again, but with this Rouge development, when the planning commission brought forth this item, no action was taken, it came without a recommendation, so the confusion was definitely there, as was well apparent, so I'm wondering how to alleviate this, so we don't look like idiots, you know, because it is very confusing, you say yes to, say yes to pass it, or say no to deny it, you know, once it got held out, it just added to the confusion, too, so I guess I was looking for some direction.
Right. I think what you have to consider is, what you're doing is, you're considering the application just the same as the plan commission did, so, and although they voted and they tied, so what they did was they sent it to you without a recommendation, so it was your, so what you do then is consider the application, to deny it or to approve it. So, generally, as I stated, we like affirmative motions, so the motion, an appropriate motion would be to approve it, a motion to approve the application, and then the vote, so then if it's, if it's an upvote, then it passes, if it's, if it's denied, then obviously, the application is denied. The problem with a negative motion is, let's say the plan commission denied it, and it wasn't a tie, but they said they denied it, well then, all you're receiving is a, is a negative recommendation on it. I still would ask that, and as I read from, what's the preferred method is, that you still consider that motion, that the application's in front of you, and you always either want to approve it or deny it, but it's based on an affirmative motion. I guess that was my point, more than what the plan commission did and the confusion. I mean, I know the tie certainly did provide more confusion, so it was kind of the perfect storm of everything that was happening, but as I stated, with conditional use permits, zoning, anything that has an application or a permit, or a request action, affirmative action to pass it, those should have affirmative motions. Even, making a motion to put it on the table to approve it does not mean that you're, you have to vote to approve it, it's just putting it, putting it out there, and then you can vote to deny it, but then, the problem is, if it comes, if someone makes a motion to deny, and it's, the motion doesn't pass, then you have a second motion to approve it, and as I stated, that's not the preferred method to do it.
So when it came before council, right, there was no recommendation, but we had to approve the report, so when you-
Well, you're, you have to think of it that, what you're really doing is, you're taking each one of those individual actions that the standing committees and the plan commission are taking, and deciding them on your own, and it's true that we generally, pretty much by unanimous consent, we try to blanket everything that we want to approve, and then we just say, yes, we approve all those actions, although some of those might contain denials, admittedly, but, and then we hold out items for separate vote. My only thing is that, to avoid negative motions, to not make notions to deny things, make motions to approve them, and then, and then you get an up or down vote like that.
So, when that got held out, what you were looking for is someone to make a motion to approve it.
Right.
And then you would-
To approve the application.
Right, and, but we really didn't have a consensus, a consensus for anyone that wanted to approve it, so that was going to be tough sledding to get a motion to approve it, right?
Well, moving to approve something is not meaning that you're in favor of it.
Like the last question, that I did, a motion to approve.
To place that question before the body, you're not necessarily saying you're approving, you could still vote to deny it if you wanted to.
He actually had a motion on the floor, like, no, it's not my time, and then he got taken back, but that was actually the property, and all of us would know or get that motion to approve, you have to consider.
I can put something together explaining it probably a little better, maybe, when I'm feeling a little better. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, your request. Alderperson Coth?
I have two referrals for the Public Works Committee. Number one, I thought our truck issue was taken care of, it's back, I'm getting the emails on a daily basis, sometimes two emails, and I think maybe we need to look at trying to find a way to make Baker Street less appealing to trucks, I also saw about at least two big rigs on Apricot today, going down that road, a little faster than twenty-five miles an hour as well, so maybe for the folks that live around there, take a look at that. The second one I want to throw to the Public Works, take a look at, is back in July, we had the agreement that we had to come up with, with the Village of Bearden regarding the bike trail, and the money that we had to come up with to complete this project in the timeline, and all that stuff with the materials. There were some people that were upset about that, about our money being spent over in Bearden, and I think what we need to do is maybe explore some type of language, I would say that in the future, we do not enter in to an agreement with the municipality without something being signed on paper before we proceed, so we're not ordering supplies or planning on construction where we find ourselves in the previous position that we did in July. If we sit down before the project starts and come up with an agreement with the municipality, then we proceed forward, but absent that agreement, we do not proceed forward to connect anything to a neighboring municipality, and those are my two referrals.
Entertained a motion to adjourn. Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed, stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here.